Twenty-four council meeting to order, and I'll ask the clerk, please call the row.
Chambers.
Here.
Shinholster.
Here.
Walden.
Here.
Map.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
We do have a quorum present, and can continue with the meeting. So if you will, please stand and join us in the prayer and the pledge.
I'll pray with me, please. God of grace and glory, as we come before you tonight during this time of the year that we as people set aside to be thankful, it reminds us of all the things that we have to be thankful for. But we have those things to be thankful for throughout the year, Father, and in most cases throughout our lifetime. So we just lift up thanks to you tonight. Thank you for your personal blessings on us. Thank you all, bless, thank you for the blessings on the city, for the opportunity to be a worker for the city and for the citizens of the city to be about the business that's necessary for this government. We just pray that you'll direct our thoughts and our words tonight as we do this work that's before us and we make this prayer in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now able to move to public comments, which there are being none according to the court. Church here. You all have received a copy of the November 12, 2024 council meeting minutes. Are there any corrections that need to be made? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes.
Second.
Motion is second. I ask the clerk, please call the row.
Chambers.
Aye.
Shinholster.
Aye.
Walden.
Aye.
Map.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
The motion carries, and the minutes are adopted. I do not have any mayor's comments on tonight, so we'll move on at this time. At this time, we'll move to the city manager's report, and I recognize Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. I do want to just check with you all and make sure that no one has any questions about the two resolutions that were added to the agenda yesterday. I was on the impression that we could probably deal with these in December, but we got new information on Friday that the proposal that had been put forth by Girma was only good for 30 days. So we felt like we needed to go ahead and get it before you. You all probably remember that during the last legislative session, House Bill 451 was passed and the governor signed it in May. And what House Bill 451 did was mandate both short-term critical illness insurance and long-term disability benefits for PTSD cases and first responders in all the governments in Georgia. Just as was done when the General Assembly passed House Bill 146 in 2017 to provide for cancer benefits for firefighters, GMA and Girma stepped up and put a package together for the PTSD program, and that's what you have before you tonight. There's two resolutions. One is a resolution to add membership in additional fund of Girma, and that's Fund C that's annotated in Appendix A. We are currently in Fund B, which is for the firefighter's cancer benefit program. And then there's a second resolution that's actually a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign off on the forms necessary for participation in the Girma, Georgia First Responder PTSD program. The only thing I will call to your attention is you will notice that if you look on Resolution 241156, which is in the back of your book, there is information on the last two pages of what's covered in this proposal. And you can see what the annual premium will be for Components 1 and 2, which are what are required by the House bill that was passed and signed. You'll notice that they give some optional limits for consideration as well. We are not recommending that those be included, but you can see what the total premium cost would be if the higher limit was utilized. We can certainly have a discussion about that when it comes time to, for y'all to vote on these two resolutions or this particular resolution. But we are recommending that the proposal that's there that provides $3,000 lifetime benefit for first responder for diagnosis benefits, and then the disability limit of maximum of $5,000 monthly benefit be what's passed for this resolution. And that, as I said, that meets the standards and requirements of what's being mandated by that, by that House bill. So I just wanted to, I try very hard not to bring y'all anything at the last minute to vote on. So since I did with this one based on the timeliness of it, I wanted to make sure that you all had the opportunity to ask me any questions that you have. The other thing that I'll mention, and Mayor, you and I talked about this, it's we got information from both Laura Mathis and Cindy Cunningham about the appointments or reappointments to the Middle Georgia Regional Commission Council. As you all know, Councilmember Shinholster currently serves as a city member, and Councilmember Map is the associate non-voting member in a county at-large position. They are both eligible to be reappointed, and that's certainly a conversation that you all can have. But if that's, if that's your pleasure and you share that with the mayor, then we've already been in contact with Cindy Cunningham to get, to get that form filled out. They will not know who their chairperson is in the county before their first meeting in January, so they will have to send the form in at that point in time for their appointee that's the chair of their board. But Laura would like for us to get everybody else's name in there, at least by December 20th if possible. And Ms. Cunningham is ready to complete the city's names and put on there for the county to sign and then send over for us to sign. So if you all would like to discuss that tonight, you can. We will, my final comment is we will be, you all will be approving the third batch of alcohol renewals tonight. This is the third renewal batch that you all have done for 2024 for the license year 2025. I think that process has gone really well, both in terms of the inspections and the businesses being ready for the license renewals, as well as you all approving them in batch form. We currently have 10 licenses that are still pending. All but one of those have passed their inspection, so we're just waiting on them to pay for their application. And as many of those as get to us prior to December 10th will come to you in a batch at that point in time. I have no plans to have a call meeting to approve any before December 31st. Certainly, I, you know, I serve at y'all's pleasure, and if that's what y'all want to do, we will. But I think these folks have had ample time and opportunity to get these applications done for their renewals, and the majority of them have stepped up. But we'll see what that number looks like, but I think we'll probably be in pretty good shape by the December 10th meeting. My final thing, Mayor, if it's okay, I'd like to ask Mr. Chambers to give you all a report on the pension committee meeting that occurred on Friday to let you know how things went with the defined contribution discussion and what our next steps are.
Thank you. We held a meeting this past Friday, as Hank said, nine o'clock in the morning, early for retiree. You've gotten the information that I think Hank has provided everybody that's in front of you, but we had good discussion. Hank let us know a lot about what some other cities were doing, other counties. We're one of the few cities left in the state that is 100% contributing to retirement. We're going with the masses as we go through this new program of defining contribution. After looking at it, we had a couple of options. One was a 4% mandatory contribution by the employee that would be matched by 4% by the city. And then from that, the employee could contribute an additional up to 4%, and the city would match up to that 4%. Second option was, and that, by the way, is what the county does. We wanted to stay in competition with our brethren and wanted to make sure that, you know, we tried really hard with our wages and everything. We wanted to make sure that the benefits stayed there too. The second option is a little bit better than what you're normally seeing, but there are quite a few that do this same contribution, and that is a 5% by the employee that is mandatory and matching a 5% by the city. Additionally, the employee can put in up to an additional 5%, and then the city would match whatever they decided to do up to 5%. So they can put in as much as 10% of their individual contribution, and the city would match up to 10%, which would be a 20% amount that would be put up. We chose option two, the 5%, unanimous by the pension committee. The employee will have a three-year vesting, which means that anything that they put in, if they were to leave before three years, they can take that with them, but they cannot take the city's contribution. They have to work here for three years before they're eligible to take anything that the city has contributed with them if they go to another job to reinvest somewhere else. That is about it. That's where we are. The employee will have a 457 deferred compensation plan, and the city will be putting into a 401A. As I said earlier, it was unanimous, and hopefully this will be brought up at our December meeting, our first December meeting. Been a long time coming, but we're there.
Do you look glad to hear that?
Does anybody have any questions? If you do, ask Hank.
I do want to go back one step, Mr. Griffin. We did talk about that today. I want to recommend to council that because of Ms. Shinholster's position on the Regional Commission, to definitely leave her in that spot. You know, she holds a treasurer's spot. And I'm going to say I want to recommend to council that we leave Ms. Map. This is our election season, so the list we have to put on ourselves, those that are willing to stay in their positions, let them stay there, if that's okay with you all. But we know for sure Ms. Shinholster needs to remain in her spot. All right. Anything else to answer?
No, Mayor. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. We'll now move on to old business. Tonight, we have the final public hearing to garner public comment regarding the proposed millage rate being decreased from 12.12 mils to 11.37 mils on the taxes levied on real and personal property assessed within the corporate limits of the city of Millersville. One mil represents a tax liability of $1 per $1,000 of assessed value of property. The procedure for conducting this hearing will be as follows. The chair will first determine that the public hearing has been properly advertised. The chair will ask the clerk to read the proposed ordinance by caption. The chair will then recognize anyone who wishes to speak regarding the proposed millage increase, rate increase. Anyone who wishes to speak regarding the proposed millage rate is encouraged to do so. As you all recognize, I will ask that you come to the podium to make your remarks and that you give your name and address for the record. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been properly posted and advertised?
Yes.
I will ask the clerk to please read ordinance O-2411-12 by caption.
An ordinance to levy and assess taxes at 11.37 mils for the support of the mayor and aldermen of the city of Millersville for the 2024 tax year and to provide for the collection of the same.
Is there anyone present who would like to speak on the proposed millage rate? I would think not. This is also the second reading of the ordinance, and we are ready to vote. Is there a motion on this ordinance?
Second.
Is there any discussion from council? I'll ask the clerk, please call the row.
Chambers.
Aye.
Shinholster.
Aye.
Walden.
Aye.
Map.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
That was the only item on old business for tonight. I will now consider the new business, which is part of the agenda. I will ask the clerk to read Resolution R. 2411-51 by caption.
A resolution to authorize an agreement with Simonton Engineering to provide engineering services as an amendment to the drainage replacement and improvement projects.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
Shall we move?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk, please call the row.
Chambers.
Aye.
Shinholster.
Aye.
Walden.
Aye.
Map.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Resolution is passed. I'll ask the clerk to read Resolution R. 2411-52 by caption.
A resolution to authorize an agreement with Simonton Engineering to provide engineering services as an amendment to the drainage replacement and improvement projects.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt? Ms. Dr. Lynn.
Is there any discussion?
If I may ask a question, in your, I think you're referencing to what was to be done through Tanglewood, Cedarwood, and Pine Valley. We've done work at Pine Valley, but I wasn't clear as to what's got to be done additionally or?
The only reason Pine Valley is included in that is because we've got to make sure everything up to Pine Valley can handle the water that's going to be coming through the vaults at Tanglewood. And so Pine Valley is included in that just because there may need to be a little bit of an opening of the trench that's there to get it the same width as the double vault that they put under Tanglewood when they did the initial work.
I just, I didn't.
I'm sorry, not Tanglewood, Pine Valley.
It would be new work.
Right. Not, not for Pine Valley. It'll just be a matter of probably widening the ditch to get to the double vault at Pine Valley. We just got to make sure when they, when they pull those pipe, those pipe out at Tanglewood and Cedarwood and put those double vaults in there. Yeah, it's going to be a lot more water, which it needs to be because the water needs to be able to be moved. But Paul included the Pine Valley piece just to make sure that if, this most likely will come back to y'all in December as a change order on the Peach State contract, which is currently doing the stormwater work. And he just wanted to make sure if any, if anything needed to happen near Pine Valley with that, that it was included in the.
There was an anticipation of.
No, sir. No, this water actually goes into the lake, to Carrington Woods Lake. Yeah. But it comes all the way from the other side of Carrington Woods. There's one, just one big ditch that comes through there. And actually, some of, some of the water from some of the drains on Dunlap and Leo Court and that area even come through the ditch.
Comes all down through there.
Right.
If you want to know where it, where it starts, you look on 441.
Yeah.
You can see all the asphalt. That's a lot of where, a lot of it comes from.
So I know this has nothing to do with it, but I mean, I've had a couple of phone calls about the little pond there on North District, Red Cross and Circle K.
That, that, we anticipate that that is a private property retention pond taken care of by the HOA, but we are making sure of that through Public Works. And so we anticipate that that will not be the city's issue, so.
Where is that, you talking?
Right.
Yeah, it's private, it's that apartment complex.
In the.
The condos.
Is that Hickory Hills condominiums, I think is what they call, so.
They've had problems with it overflowing a good bit and things of that nature, and I don't know if they just let it, let it go with its last.
I, I'm not real sure what happened to the water that was in there, you know? We did work, we did work across the street, and we may have done it too well. Right. But Ms. Hills and Butts actually took a call today on that from one of the residents. And so maybe it's one of the same people you talked to, but, but yeah, we, we're going to check that out to make sure that is in fact the case, but we think it belongs to the HOA, so.
Any other comments or discussion? No, I'll ask the clerk, please call the row.
Chambers.
Aye.
Shinholster.
Aye.
Walden.
Aye.
Map.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Mayor, if I could, just, I mentioned it in my report, but both of those most likely will be coming back to you all as a change order for the Peach State work at the December 10th meeting, and both of those will be paid with remaining offer money.
I'll ask the clerk to read Resolution R. 2411-53 by caption.
A resolution to authorize a contract with Low Country Foundation repair for lifting and leveling of uneven concrete and foundation stabilization at the Millersville Police Department.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt? Is there any discussion? No, I'll ask the clerk, please call the row.
Chambers.
Aye.
Shinholster.
Aye.
Walden.
Aye.
Map.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Lee.
Resolution is passed. As mentioned by the city manager in his report, we will vote tonight on the third batch of 2024 alcohol license renewals following the voting process 22 placed in 2023. The individual applications are listed in the attachment to the resolution. I will ask the clerk to read Resolution R. 2411-54 by caption.
A resolution to approve the alcohol license renewal applications as set forth on the attached Exhibit A for the calendar year 2025.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
Move, we approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Clerk, please call the row.
Chambers.
Aye.
Shinholster.
Aye.
Walden.
Aye.
Map.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Okay, so 23, 2023, four man. I'll ask the clerk to read Resolution R. 2411-55 by caption.
A resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Millersville to add membership in a fund of Georgia into her local risk management agency.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt? Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk, please call the row.
Chambers.
Aye.
Shinholster.
Aye.
Walden.
Aye.
Map.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Resolution is approved. I'll ask the clerk to read Resolution R. 2411-56 by caption.
A resolution to authorize participation in the Girma, Georgia First Responder PTSD Program.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
Shall we move?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Clerk, please call the row.
Chambers.
Aye.
Shinholster.
Aye.
Walden.
Aye.
Map.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Resolution is approved. We do not have any appointments to make tonight, but.
I wanted to ask, so just so I can tell him what to do, we had had someone to resign from the landing, and I spoke with Mr. Larry Martin about serving in that position, and he has agreed to serve. And then I, then I wondered, because I think that we made the other appointments without resumes, or just made appointments, or does he need to submit a resume?
If I remember correctly, the resumes were made at the recommendation of council members, and there were no resumes submitted on those, so.
You said Larry?
Larry Martin.
Yeah, yeah, he'll do a good job.
And I didn't know if I needed to.
Mayor, if everybody, you know, is verbal agreement with that tonight, we'll have that on the agenda for the December 10th meeting for a formal approval.
I'm good with him. Yeah, he did a good job.
How is our zoning board? We have everybody accept.
We got, we, we will be moving, you all will, I keep saying "we," and I don't vote. You all will be moving Mr. Hill up to chairperson, and then District Four will need a new representative. I'm sorry, Three will need a new representative.
So Mr. Martin's going to go. So who, Mr. Martin's going up in which?
Mr. Martin's going on to the.
Okay, okay. So we do not have any appointments to make tonight. They'll be made at the next meeting, and we do not have a need to go into closed session tonight for city manager and city attorney. So this concludes the items on the agenda. Does anyone on council have any questions or comments?
Everybody have a nice Thanksgiving. You can spend time with family and Walter, you be safe on the road.
Thank you, Steve.
Anybody else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
She's to adjourn.
I'll ask the clerk, please call the row.
Chambers.
Aye.
Shinholster.
Aye.
Walden.
Aye.
Map.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Lee.
We stand adjourned. You all have a happy holiday. You all have a happy holiday.